No, that was the only one. They tried to start enabling one itself at the middle town. This is one of the oldest ones around. What is this? Is it the oldest, one of the older ones? They might see that mention it, yeah. These are the ones.
Seeing as it's 6:30, we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Nash, can we have a roll call, please? Here.
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 Flowers?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Thank you. We'll now have the Rogers High School Junior ROTC leaders in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Color Gods. Could we all stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, halt. Right face. Forward, march. March, march. Hold. Order, halt.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll now have our moment of silence. Could we keep the following individuals who have passed away in our thoughts and prayers? Robert Emerson, retired microfilm technician. Barbara Brett, mother-in-law of Elizabeth Brett, technology secretary. Donna Molly, aunt of Tracy Perry, Pell instructional assistant. Eileen Leonard, great-aunt of Marie Gualt Noon, TMS teacher. Shirley Quinn, aunt of Lisa Paglirini, Pell teacher. And Carmela Gallo, grandmother of Casey Gallo, a Rogers High School teacher. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Normally, we'd have the student council update at this time, but Megan had something come up that she couldn't be with us tonight, so we don't have a student council update this month. The next thing leads us into the recognition and certificates of achievement. The first recognition is for the Skills USA students who recently competed in the Rhode Island Annual Skills USA Rhode Island Awards. And it was held in Rogers, and ACT Tech were well represented. We have some of the winners here this evening with us, I believe, and Mr. Young will pass out the certificates of achievement as we call the students. We'll start first with the Technical Computer Applications. Pauline Cooper. She won a gold medal winner. And if you guys want to just, well, not Pauline, you can go sit back down, but the rest, when you come up, if you stand up front, you'll get your couple of minutes on the recording. Matthew Raybeck, silver medal winner. Will Daley was a bronze medal winner. In the Information Technology Services Division, John Gleason was a gold medal winner. Liam Shea was a silver medal winner. In the Web Design Division, Robert Dufault and Nicholas Kennedy were gold medal winners. And Automotive Services, Cooper Mello was a bronze medal winner. The first place winners that were announced, or that we announced here will be competing in the national competition this June in Atlanta, Georgia. So congratulations to all. Thank you for doing a good job representing Rogers. So the Junior ROTC are the next up for certificate of achievements. They are going to do theirs, they're going to come up as one group. Once they get up, I will announce their names. The Junior ROTC cadets recently scored a 98% on their triennial accreditation. They maintain the honor unit with distinction rating with a congressional nomination to a service academy such as Annapolis, worth a congressional nomination to service academies such as Annapolis or West Point. So congratulations to the cadets. If they want to come up, and once they get in formation, I will read out the names of the cadets. So the cadets that were recognized were Madeline Aguilar, Janay Kabaris, Andrew Goodburn, Giselle Green, Gillem O'Jassy, Riley Lane, Matthew Mullins, Queen Thomas, and Chad Viera. So they deserve a big round of appreciation. And I know that their leader, Colonel, retired Lieutenant Colonel Christopher Corbett is with us this evening as well. And I'm not sure if Sergeant Frank McCray is here, but congratulations to them and their leadership of the Junior ROTC. Colonel Corbett, would you like to say anything? Are you okay? Not required, just wondering if.
Cadets, you guys can say anything. All right, I'd like to thank everybody who was able to help us participate in our accreditation ceremony. I'd like to thank the staff and the faculty for letting us be able to attend our practices that we continued, so that way we would be able to score so well. I'd also like to thank our JRTC instructors. They were a big help in guiding us to make sure that we were able to meet the requirements and guide our leadership and commitment skills as well. And of course, I'd like to give a big shout out to the cadets. They worked extremely hard throughout this school year. They were able to show everything in this inspection, so thank you so much.
Thank you and congratulations to the cadets. The next, we have a couple of presentations this evening. One is, the first one is from the Boys and Girls Club, and I believe Tom is here to.
Joe.
Joe, I'm sorry, Joe. I apologize. Joe's an easy name to remember with the Boys and Girls Club, you'd think I would.
Hi, everyone. I'm Joe Tomczek. I'm the Assistant Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Club. I have a brief presentation on what we did with the ESAR funding that we generously received from everybody. So first, I'll talk a little bit about last summer. Historically, the club ran a program called Navigate Your Future, which worked with teachers and staff to implement a program for 30 incoming freshmen, who were paired with 15 juniors trained as peer leaders. Over six weeks, kids would participate in field trips and experience focused on time and money management, career exploration, and social competency. This past summer, in lieu of doing the Navigate Your Future program, we worked with Fab Newport to implement the Newport experience for the 90 kids that were served. We helped to identify and train peer leaders in this model, but participants could choose a wide range of experiences with community partners. Working with Fab Newport to collaborate in a new model and serve the kids differently was really well received, and we're happy to work with them again this summer. So thank you to Fab Newport and to everyone. And you can, I can't receive.
You can take that off, Joe, if you want, come around.
Sure.
That'll unclip.
The majority of the funding had been used primarily to cover expenses that were relating to staffing, planning, program materials, the peer leader coordination, CPR first aid training, and the use of the bus for transportation. And then our primary effort was around peer leader training enrollment, supervision for provided programming around self-care, healthy lifestyles, did food service management with the vendor, and data entry and facility support. Next slide. During the school year, you know, we're a full-service club, offering childcare, summer camp, aquatics, out-of-school time programming, activities, athletic programs, a team program at the Florence Gray Center. And during the pandemic, in keeping with our core mission, which is to inspire and enable youth, especially those who need us most, to become responsible, productive, and caring citizens, we made a commitment to serving all of our core participants throughout the pandemic, regardless of their ability to pay. As you can expect, this was a substantial financial burden. Prior to the pandemic, we had a reimbursement of, from CCAP for, about 92 youth were enrolled in our KCH Child Care Program. And because CCAP eligibility is directly tied to the hours families work, more than half of our participants lost that funding and could no longer afford or were eligible for their program. So currently, we have 47 kids back on CCAP. And the families who had been part of the program but could no longer afford to pay had been given full scholarships to continue to participate. So none of the kids that we had originally, who had been participating, who could no longer pay, are still participating. And that's due to the funding that we were able to receive through this. The cost for the program per week is $200, but with ESAR funding, we were able to scholarship in at $85 per week. And that's for 29 kids that are currently participating with us, and that's since the beginning of the year. In addition to the scholarships that we provide for kids, we also dedicated funding towards a primary contact at each of the schools that would connect with working groups that are being run through the Newport Partnership for Families to aid in developing an action plan to address the issue stemming from COVID. The working groups started really meeting at the beginning of February, and the action plans are in development. And I want to thank Jared Cahini, Jared Vance, and Katie Francis for participating in those working groups and working with us in developing that action plan. Also, when we applied, we weren't sure of the need to continue the distance learning support we had provided the past year. Unfortunately, schools were able to return to in-person learning, and those funds were reallocated to the scholarships to allow more kids to participate. Next slide. All of our activities fall into at least one of our three outcome areas: academic success, healthy lifestyles, and character and leadership development. All of it put young people on the path to great futures, and some of the outcomes we hope to achieve include increased self-confidence, self-esteem, and self-efficacy, decreased levels of depression and anxiety, helping youth to avoid drug and alcohol use and risky behavior, and improved feelings and attitudes toward self and school. With COVID and with the pandemic and people being isolated more than ever, kids needed to have that social interaction, and the fact that we were able to provide this has been huge. And you can see from the slides some of the activities that we're able to offer. It's been a tough three years, but we're excited to say that our program is back in full swing. We're seeing upwards of 65 kids at the Florence Gray Center every day, and our childcare program is at max enrollment. Some of the other things that I wanted to show to you tonight, but because of time, I don't have time to do that, was that we created videos to document how kids were feeling at the beginning of COVID, midway through distance learning, and then this past year to show the progress the kids have made, and then also to have a historical reference for our community. We don't have time to show you these videos tonight, but if you do have a chance, I believe that they were sent to you in advance. And I urge you to take a look. It's really interesting to watch the kids and the progression from where they were two years ago to where they are today. So that's it. Thank you for the two to three minutes, and appreciate your time.
Joe, just maybe a few questions.
Absolutely.
Miss Boland, go right ahead.
I just want to comment that I saw all three videos online, and they were excellent. They were very insightful. And to sit and listen to the kids and tell it from their point of view, you know, what COVID in the last two years has been like, it was really good.
Thank you.
Ms. Winslow?
I agree with Mrs. Boland. I also watched the videos, and thank you for the presentation. And I really just wanted to say thank you in general. I don't know how many people in Newport realize just how lucky we are with all of the partners we have who do so much stuff outside of school and help, you know, the whole package. It's remarkable. I mean, we had Fab Newport about a month ago, I think, give us a great presentation and just to see all the things you do. I don't know what we would do without everybody. Really don't, so thank you.
Thank you. We are an incredible community of partners that really come together to serve our kids and our families as much as we possibly can. And it's great to be part of it.
Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
I just want to say, I totally agree with that, and we thank you for keeping up the good work and staying strong into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, any comments, questions? All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. One more presentation. This will be a presentation on the multi-tiered system of support that a district is working on. Directors Andrea Mooney and Mrs. Canini, I believe, are here.
Good evening. So I'm Jennifer Canini. I'm the MTSS coordinator just here at Pell, but I'm speaking on behalf of the district. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. So MTSS really is the process of looking at. Oh, that's okay. Oh, looking at the process of not what's wrong with the kid, but maybe what can we do with the system to make it fit better to their individual needs. So the next slide. So MTSS is the framework where we look at data and provide intervention in just informed practices for the different tiers of support. And it allows all students to access the curriculum, identify their needs, and then ultimately educate every student where they are. So it's a priority for all children that we have an MTSS system of support, but especially our EL students, who can accidentally or mistakenly be identified for having a learning disability or even missing out and assuming they have a disability when it's just an access issue. So in another slide soon, you're going to see the roadmap that we designed at the different schools and how we're disaggregating those tiers. And the next slide. Thanks, yeah. So Tier One is the core instruction, and that ensures that everyone has access to high-quality curriculum. And that does not go away ever. So you never leave one tier to get to the next, or you don't leave Tier One to go to Tier Two. Everyone is receiving that Tier One quality curriculum. Tier Two is more targeted, and we're making sure that we're delivering exactly what kiddos need where they are at that time. And Tier Three is obviously the most intensive. It might be an increased rate or different program, but this graphic really shows it. So we have all of our students, some of our students, and then hopefully just a few. So everybody loves going to the dentist, right? So I'm going to use an oral health analogy. So we think of it like this, this Tier One is the dentist. Everybody needs to go to the dentist. The dentist can check and make sure that your teeth are healthy. They do some preactive, I mean proactive care with cleanings, et cetera. But you need to be there, okay? So when you're at the dentist, well, cavity comes up. Well, you need a little intervention. So the dentist can still do that. You don't have to go somewhere else to get that little Tier Two intervention, but you need a little more, and you maybe even have to have a tooth pulled. The dentist can handle that, too. However, there are times where you need a little bit more than what the dentist can provide. But you don't stop going to the dentist. You don't stop getting those cleanings. You don't stop getting those checkups. Maybe now you need to go get braces or some oral surgery, but you still stay with your dentist through all of that. But you're getting a little bit more at different times. You can go to the next slide. So again, to our EL population, which has grown so considerably in Newport, it is so important that they have access to that Tier One curriculum. And included in that tier curriculum for them is what is provided for them from the EL teachers. So that is not an intervention, it's just part of their core. But in order to access the classroom core, they're going to need some differentiation, and the teachers will need to be able to give them what we call like multiple entry points to a task. It might not look the same for everyone, but they have to have access to that quality curriculum in the English language to move them along as well. The next slide shows what I mentioned before. We call this our flow chart or decision tree, and you do have a copy of it, because I know the print is super small. But we've designed this at the elementary and the middle school for reading and math. The middle school, I know, is a little ahead of us on the behavior one as well. And currently, at Pell, we're working on a decision tree like this for social-emotional learning. But you'll see that that Tier One is right across the top, right? So how do we decide who's in which tier at what point in time? So we're using our universal screeners like STAR assessments, and I can speak better to the elementary, of course, because we use programs like iReady and Interreading. Those are our curriculum diagnostics. And then using the data from there, kids kind of funnel down into the different tiers. Once they're in that tier, then the level of instruction or possibly the program that's being used to instruct changes. Possibly it's with a different adult, or it could still be with the classroom teacher, like the dentist, right? They're capable of implementing new tools, new strategies, smaller group. We use progress monitoring tools that tell us whether or not they're making progress and if the intervention is working. And we have, again, disaggregated what tools we'll be using in order to make sure those targets are being met. So, and you can look at this for both the literacy and the numeracy. So I feel like this year has been so successful for Newport Public Schools in our, you know, our first year of really having this MTSS coordinator role. So some of the things that have been implemented thus far are the regularly scheduled MTSS meetings to review data and meet on students. So that is the coordinator, a team of teachers, depending on what the need of the or challenge of the student is, based on the data, as well as the classroom teacher. And in those meetings, intervention plans are designed. We have purchased and implemented more assessments across the board, core assessments, screeners, and targeted assessments for progress monitoring. We've also implemented the use of a program called Power School, which is just a data warehouse where we're able to track all intervention resources, IEPs. So it's in one warehouse, and then it just follows the kiddos wherever they go. And it really has proven beneficial this year because the children that maybe are possibly in a Tier Two intervention that are needing the Tier Three, all the documentation is there. We've added a couple of new positions. I know a math interventionist here at Pell and one at Thompson. And then Pell has the addition of four instructional assistants. They've been trained in interventions, progress monitoring. Really amazing how much, how many kids they've been able to help this year, and we've been able to track that. And that's also, as I mentioned before, helped with not over-identifying students and identifying students, which you can imagine after the couple of years of COVID and we have had a kind of a lag in opportunities to identify kids, it's been really beneficial. And then lastly, the ability to train people that are already working in the building in more research-based interventions and tracking the data. So it's a lot, and it's been great, and I think the evidence is going to be there to be shown. Any questions?
Yeah, first, I want to thank you for coming, because it's nice to hear some of the improvements that are actually happening right now. So thank you. Couple of things I want to, so I know we're implementing the high-quality curriculum now. So are you helping in that part of it? And is that going to, what would you say that might take us a big leap? Or how would you measure that effect on students?
So I can speak to the way I've been working with the core curriculum at Pell. One of my roles, if you will, is I attend the weekly PLCs with the grade-level teachers. And of course, because we have a new reading program, that has been a big task to tackle. So within MTSS, we navigated through what are the things that we can do really well this year? Because it's a big chunk. And what are our kids' needs? And then building the scope and sequence to fill those holes in the past. We also revisited our instructional minutes, because we hadn't done that in a bit, and this program is going to take a lot of time. I mentioned multiple access points or entry points for students. So we've looked at individual units within those programs, and how can the ELs access, because it's not going to look like everybody else. We've also looked at our program and how it aligns to the RICAS and our scores from last year, which we should definitely see a huge improvement, right? But where did we really score poorly? And what is in this high-quality curriculum that aligns to that? And how can we make sure we're giving kids great access to it? So within this role, I really have been looking at the core as well.
Thank you. And then the only, the second question is the data. You're focused a lot on the data, and I know, how would you say, like, we're moving from like somewhat used to significant use? Or how would you determine that? Because I think data is something that's very important. But I'm just curious from your perspective.
So I am a self-proclaimed dork for data, and I know not everyone is interested in that. So my goal at Pell School was to find each teacher's driver. What is your educational high? And surveyed the teachers and said, what if I tell you, if your educational high is that aha moment or that relationship with the kid, what if I tell you data is going to get you there? So I, you know, I weaseled my way into that point, and they are very receptive to looking at data, especially when you can show that it's working. And I'd love a ton of time to brag to you about the instructional support assistant's success and the math coach's success and the reading teacher's success. So anytime you want to listen to that.
Thank you. Yeah, first a comment or a question. So I've heard of PLPs, but what's a PLC?
Oh, it's a professional learning community. So at Pell School, and I know at Thompson, I'm not sure, I know that they have them at the high school, and I just can't speak to it because I don't know what they look like. But we have an agenda for the year. This year, our goal with the help at Pell with Highlander was to always be looking at data. So we had a Looking at Student Work Data template that we, you know, unveiled and worked through this year. But in that professional learning community, it's every teacher in the grade level, myself and/or other. it's every teacher in the grade level, myself and/or other administrators, reading, math, EL support, they pick a grade level and join.
And my question is, so I noticed the numbers that you assigned to, you know, children. So would every child at Pell at this point of the year be assigned a number? Whether they're--
So I'm super, so it's always going to depend on numbers, right? And how many, how many kiddos can be serviced by a human? I can tell you that every kid below the 25th percentile in math is being serviced by an interventionist, which I think is pretty amazing. It's, I wrote 110 kids. And that's one full time and two half time. And then reading is a little bit harder because there's so many more. But we're 130 kids. Instructional support has 80. And it started more, but the good news is they're doing like basics and then they move out and go to the reading. And SEL and behavior, where you have 84 kids getting interventions in that area, too, which we really didn't even talk about that.
Do you need more interventionists?
I would take more interventionists. Sorry. Is it a real? I think what, and again, I hate that I'm only speaking toward to Pell, but this is where I am. I walked down the hallway today. I trained all the kindergarten paras in a math and literacy intervention. And I walked down the hallway and I see the kindergarten paras now doing targeted interventions in the hallway with kids. And they've always been helping in the classroom, but they, if you give them a tool that is manageable on training. So I want to follow those kids. Are they going to have better numbers since next year? Will they have better letter recognition next year? Because it was focused and not just the kids that are struggling, but everyone. So.
Yes, great job.
Thank you.
Let me go. That'll come down. Anybody down there, Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, it just seems, looking at the charts that you kindly provided us, that, speaking from experience here, that it seems that every child on that, from the ones who have the most challenges to the ones who probably need the least help would benefit. Because I see the part where it says to work for the depth of the content areas, you know, to really get into things here. The, using the research-based assessments, to me, it would kind of guarantee that no matter which room the young ones are in, everyone's on, there's that expression, on the same page. But literally this time. So that kind of guarantees that every youngster, regardless of placement, will have the same opportunities. So it sounds very complex, but--
It's happening, yeah.
It really did. It sounds, it sounds great. It sounds like something that's probably long overdue, many decades. Thank you.
All right, Ms., go right ahead.
I have two questions. The first one is, you said you're seeing a lot of improvements, right? So I'm assuming that's mostly measurable--
Yep.
Data, scores and assessment scores. Do you think, or are the kids verbalizing or showing that they know they're improving?
So I could tell you some tear jerkers.
Okay.
It's true. A third grader, I'm going to cry. But a third grader that said, I finally read my first book. Third grade. You know, so it, we're really working on those foundational skills. And to Mrs. Flowers' point, using research-based interventions that are very sequential, that have evidence to work with students that have learning disabilities, achievement gaps, second languages, learning, you know, a second language. So yes, they're feeling better about themselves. But I also think this was such a gift this year because there was no, especially the instructional support, there was just no way that the reading teachers would have been able to alone met with, you know, we added another 100, 110 kids. So moving them along.
Okay, thank you. My last question is, so we do this at Pell and at Thompson, but we don't do it at Rogers?
Rogers, Rogers does. But it just looks a little bit different.
Okay.
Their, yeah, yep. Their biggest focus is the attendance. So their MTSS stemmed around getting kids into school and then has morphed into a more academic. But they started with attendance, which made sense for sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good job.
Mr. Nash, do we have anybody signed up for public comment this time? Chris, if you could just state your name and when you get up there for us and--
Sorry. Chris Gross, 43 Holland Street in Newport. So I just want to take some time, two minutes, right? I want to have a vote of confidence in Mr. Barrios. Because I know in reading the newspapers, yeah, in the vote of no confidence, I just want to make sure that my opinion is heard as well. Coming into a complex job in the middle of a global pandemic less than a year ago, while being new to the island, from what I've seen, he has continued to advocate for student-centered learning. Through my work at Fab Newport, I'm able to be inside Thompson twice a week as a supportive mentor to students and can speak confidently to his dedication and care for the students. I think a good example is when talking to kids, they say he not only knows their names, but when he asks, how are you doing? He's one of the rare people that like actually want to know how they're doing and takes the time to get to know students' interests and what makes them tick. I was disappointed to read the public vote of no confidence from the Teachers Association of Newport, especially hearing Jennifer Hall, the acting president, say, quote, Rogers High School works like a well-oiled machine. Pell Elementary works like a well-oiled machine. Thompson does not. As reason for why Mr. Barrios is not the right person for the job. I think we need to realize this opportunity right now to reinvent this machine. Because the one we got is not working. The students deserve better. And right now is the time to collaboratively build a new machine that is designed for all students. And in order to do this, we will need leaders who not only genuinely care about students, but are willing to stand up for their needs. And Mr. Barrios deserves from us the same respect, patience, and unconditional love that he gives to students every day. He is someone I'm willing to work with to realize our collective one Newport vision. Thank you.
Good evening. Ellen Pinock, 220 Maple Avenue, Newport. And I'm also here to give my vote of confidence in Xavier Barrios. I was also very disheartened to read the article in the paper. I've been working in the schools for a few years now. But I started something called the Heart Club in January. And Xavier and some other folks at Thompson have been very supportive of that. And letting Chris and myself and Chris's dog, Nali, and Ajanee come into the school and just kind of wrap around students and just do something a little bit differently than what they're used to. So on Monday, kids came down and that's all they wanted to talk about was the vote of no confidence. And some kids were very afraid that they were going to lose their principal. One kid said that this was the first time, he's in the eighth grade, and this was the first time he actually knew who the principal was in Thompson. So without prompting the kids, they just started to say things. So I took down some quotes and I kept those. And kids fifth through eighth grade said, he's a good principal, very friendly. I feel like I know him because I'm Hispanic, too. It's good to see someone that looks like me in the building. I like him, he's nice, he understands what kids want. My favorite part is that he likes talkies. He hangs out with us at recess. I'm worried because everyone is saying he's not going to be here anymore and I want him to stay. He's a nice person. He does a lot of nice things at the school. He brings snacks. He talks to me every day. He's very kind and respectful. He keeps things organized. He's really nice. He remembers my name. He even remembers I have puppies. He asks how my day is every day. He says my name first. He is nice. He gives us popsicles. He's nice, kind and creative. He's respectful and generous. He asks how my family is doing on my way to class. He encourages us. He's chill, really, but when I do something wrong, he tells me. He's new, he needs a chance. And that's the fine, that's the last quote that I took from an eighth grader. And I know that we're all collectively working towards this vision of one Newport. And it's been a lot of work and will continue to be a lot of work. And I think that if we're ever going to reach that point, that we really do have to try to set like some of our personal feelings and things aside and just do what's best for our community. And that includes the teachers, that includes the students, the school committee, the superintendent, the parents, all of these folks here that are on these two benches. And they're also here in support of Xavier because they also read the article and felt the same way. And I just hope that going forward, that we really can find a way to do things more cohesively, to work together. Because at the end of the day, that's what the kids need. And I hope that everything that I've read here is taken into consideration about Xavier because this is genuinely coming from the students. And I think that those, along with the teachers and other folks in the building, but the students need to have a voice. They need to be heard. And clearly, when they do open their mouth to talk, a lot of good stuff comes out. And, you know, to Xavier, I know it wasn't easy, getting that vote of no confidence. And one thing I do want to say is that, and that goes for everyone, when you reach the end of your rope, tie a knot in it and hang on. And that's it. So thank you very much for listening. Appreciate you all.
That's it already? Thank you. The next--
Mr. Gomes?
Mr. Leary?
We did get a letter from a parent also that's not being read. Am I correct? For public comment? Yeah, okay. So everybody received it on the committee?
They will.
Oh, well, okay.
The level will be disseminated out--
I know we're not allowed to discuss it, Mr. Gomes. So, Ms. Jermaine, if you could give us an update and then report on what the action is going to be for that?
Ms. Leary, I believe you're talking about an unrelated topic.
Oh, yeah, it's a public comment.
This is, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you'd done that, you're on public comment still, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm, could, I'm not clear the direction you're giving me at this time.
If you could give us a report on what she's requesting?
Oh, okay, yes. I can do that. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that leads us into action items. The first action item is action item 6.1. That's an adoption of resolution 22, 2022-04, month of the military, military child. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Ms. Boland, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And Ms. Boland will read the resolution and then we'll act upon it.
So before I, before I do that, I'm going to first just tell you my history. My husband was in the military for 24 years and I had six children that were, got to be, you know, military, they call them brats. So it's very close and dear to my heart. But I'm going to read this little poem that I found about military child first because I think it describes it really well. It says, Wired Military Children Like Dandelions. Dandelions put down roots almost anywhere and it's impossible to destroy. It's an unpretentious plant, yet it's good-looking. It's a survivor in a broad range of climates. Military children bloom wherever the wind carries them. They are hardy and they're upright. Their roots are strong, cultivated deeply in the culture of the armed forces. And they're planted swiftly and surely. They're ready to fly in the breezes that take them to new adventures, new lands, and new friends. Military children are well-rounded. They're culturally aware, they're tolerant, and extremely resilient that they have learned from an early age that home is where their hearts are, that a good friend can be found in every corner of the world. They learn that to survive means to adapt, that the door that closes one chapter of their life opens up to a new and exciting adventure full of new friends and new experiences. So I thought that was really appropriate. So now I'm going to read the resolution on the part of the Newport School District. Says here, whereas across our nation and here in the state of Rhode Island, children in military families sacrifice much in order to allow their parents to serve our nation and protect our liberty. In this month of April, people are encouraged to show their support for our military and veteran children and to thank them for their strength and sacrifices that have made and will continue to make. And whereas there are approximately 2 million military children in the United States, with 1.3 million being school-aged, the average military student faces transition challenges more than twice during high school. And most military children attend six to nine different school systems from kindergarten through the 12th grade. Taking care of our military children sustains our nation's fighting forces and strengthens the health and safety of our nation's family and communities. And whereas the Military Interstate Children's Compact Commission, it's called MYC3, is committed to resolving the educational transition issues that are faced by these childrens and their families, ensuring that they are afforded the same opportunities for educational success as other children and are not delayed in achieving their educational goals. And whereas the Newport Public School recognizes the service and sacrifice of our military members, their family, and especially their children, and now therefore be it that the Newport School Committee hereby proclaims the month of April as the month of the military child in all Newport Public Schools and calls this observance to the attention of all citizens, bearing witness by our chair and our superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Very nice.
Any questions or comments on the proclamation? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good poem, too, Becky, thank you. That leads us to 6.2, request for approval of the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. And Mr. Gonzalez is here to, is there a motion to approve the budget as presented? Ms. Boatright, seconded by Dr. Flowers. And now Mr. Gonzalez is here to speak on it? Or I don't know if you have a presentation or you're looking for questions?
Good evening, school committee. Maybe I can highlight some of the changes. Maybe I can highlight some of the changes since our February meeting and discussion. So material changes that took place was, we were notified about a week and a half ago of our actual anticipated health insurance increase costs, which are roughly 5%. We have also updated the certified pension rate to actual. Previously, it was at a 0.05% increase and now it's just about a quarter percent increase for our pension costs. The other two material changes were related to revenue. We have a level-funded recommendation from the city of Newport appropriation. And the other offset, material offset, was a 50% cost-sharing assistance with our OPEB retiree benefit costs. So those are the material changes that took place between February and today's presentation. Are there any questions?
Ms. Chair?
Mr. Leary?
Yeah, I do it. Thank you. It appears that the-- It appears that the 23, 24 budget projection is nearly a 4% increase, but it doesn't say that. Last year and other years, you tell the exact percentage. Is it 4% or no, you're asking for?
We are not asking for anything with regard to 2024. We have just used planning values for the forecast of 2024 and it's not balanced. It isn't balanced for 2024.
What about 23?
2023 is a level funded from the local appropriation.
Level funded, okay. So how do you plan addressing those increases?
We have.
Like the ones you just reviewed?
We are anticipating assistance with our OPEB retiree medical benefit costs.
So for the press and the people here, what exactly is the increase from everything besides the healthcare and teachers' pensions and stuff like that? What exactly, what number are we talking about? Like a million dollars?
Would you please rephrase that question?
Yeah, so if you look at, you've just been through a couple of the costs. You went through the 5% increase under health and medical. You just went through the increase in retirement for Council 94. What about, and that shows you what the increase is on the paper here. What is the total increase, including things like salary impact? With the two, what's two and a half percent raise, my bad, sorry. And increase in busing costs and things like that. So what are we looking at? Are we looking at a million dollar increase in cost from one year to the next, this year to the next?
So in salary alone for 2023, we have approximately 1.2 million dollar anticipated increase. And these are the material assumptions and considerations on page one. Summarized anticipated costs for all active health, life and dental, including retirees. 368,000. Our anticipated certified pension rate is going to increase by 144,000. The projected transportation costs, including bus monitor costs, is anticipated to increase at 190,000. And we have a small add-on for projected technology-related hardware for both Pell and Rogers. And that was at $40,000.
So what's the plan to get that 1.2 million dollar increase?
We are receiving assistance for our retiree OPEB costs. There is anticipated assistance to help offset the increased costs that we have, that we will be incurring next year.
From the city?
That's correct, from the.
OPEB.
OPEB trust fund, yes.
To the city?
That's right.
Not the OPEB members?
That's correct.
So I've been in touch with them. They are not happy with this. Not one member of the committee is happy with that. But the city will. So interesting, let me ask you a question then. We have over a $3 million surplus, what's the plan for that?
So we had a workshop with the city council in January and we put together a presentation for the city council members as well as our school committee members. And roughly just over half would remain in, now, all of these dollars are in our fund balance, all of them. But over half would be earmarked for a rainy day fund for the school. You know, that's a typical cushion, so to speak, for one-time expenses, major costs that may be incurred in a given year. The remaining balance would be used for an educational fund that's managed by the school committee to be used once our federal stimulus dollars are exhausted. And all of that money is currently residing in the fund balance. And technically, I don't have any access to it without approval from the board, the school committee.
So like for the 10 million that's in ESAR funds for this year, eventually plan on, when that money's all gone in two years, plan using the fund balance to cover things that we've hired?
I believe the education fund will be available to us to support areas that the school committee feels need additional assistance if we are unable to balance our budget with the anticipated costs.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Drane.
Mr. Gonzalez, I just want to back up a little bit. Are we on track for this year? Are we on pace, are we on track, are we ahead, behind?
We are in a great position, especially with all of the federal stimulus dollars that are still available for us.
Okay, well, that's good news. Now, just so I understand, so we're asking the city for no more money than we asked last year? So it's level funded, we're not asking for 4% like we did last year? This budget, is that correct?
That is the way it's presented right now. And that is in part with, you know, working relationships with the city, the management of the city. You know, I reached out to them about six months ago and I asked for, you know, realistic targets. I wanted to present something to the school committee that would, you know, would work for both sides. And this is the compromise that was, you know, arrived at. And it works for the school department. We have a balanced budget presented. And I believe we'll be able to cover all of the anticipated costs at this time. So, yeah, we don't have to necessarily ask for 4% and then come back in May with reductions or cuts anywhere.
No, I appreciate that because I've worked against the budget last year because, you know, we were asking for 4% and we knew it was going to get cut. You know, and I said at the time, I would like to go to the city council with a realistic budget. So I'm glad to see that it looks like we are. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Boatright?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak a little bit on it. One, we, some of us have gone to some school committee training on budgeting and having a surplus is a very good thing and something that they recommend having. Number two, also creating that maintenance fund balance is something that we are all in very much support of. Did want to speak specifically to the OPEB item because I know there's a lot of thoughts on it. But my thought is, the OPEB fund that is being put together is an excellent fund to have. It's really to offset unfunded liabilities of the past. And so we have this in our budget that we're paying for something that was not funded in the past. Also today, or starting now, we have bond, a bond coming on, which is paying for the schools of the future. So the current idea of tapping into part of that OPEB funding now makes huge sense to me. And I just wanted to get that on the record because I think it's very important that taxpayers today just get some of that relief today. And it's not all of it, it's not tapping into the whole thing, but it's just a partial. And I think it makes huge sense. So I'm very happy the city has opted to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Boland? I'll get back to you in a minute, Mr. Leary.
So is the city taking OPEB money this year too, to help fund theirs, do you know?
I am not sure.
Not sure, okay. But I will say that if Laura Citron is okay with this, she's probably the most conservative budget person in the state. If she's good with this, then it's got to be good for the city.
Mr. Leary?
So this million dollars from OPEB, is it maintenance of effort or is it one-time just contribution?
The understanding I have is this will be permanent assistance for our retiree costs.
No, no, I mean, I'm going to rephrase the question. So is it going to be a one-time contribution, like a million dollars they gave us to get computers? Or is this going to go, city, let's say, I don't have the exact number the city gives us right now. What's the number the city gives us?
27.2 million.
Is this going to be 28.2 million next year?
This OPEB offset is not necessarily directly correlated with our MOE.
Right, I know that. Well, I want to make sure the public knows that. You misspoke.
I, but like I did, my first statement was, this is likely, you know, assuming it passes, nothing is set in stone right now, it has to pass the city council.
Correct.
But it is likely to be a permanent assistance to our retiree costs.
Right, but that fund is only 50% funded. You need to get the 80 and 90% funded according to the chairman of the trust fund before you start taking money out of it. And I don't want to speak for all of them, but they are pretty unhappy. And I'm sure the city's going to hear about it because they want that money to stay there. And then you start drawing funds from that. So if you start drawing from that now, you're going to have what's happening in the province right now. They're looking for a bond to put money into the OPEB cost. So I am dead set against this. We will not support this one bit.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Gonzalez? All right, thank you. Not seeing or hearing any more questions, all those in favor of the budget as presented this evening, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-1. Next item is approval of the 2022-2023 school calendar as presented. Is there a motion to approve it? It's Ms. Boland, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Any discussion or comments, questions on the? Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
Two comments. I'm wondering, in TAN's contract, they have a date. They say, you know, the school year won't start before September 1st or extend beyond June 30th. But there was a lot of burnout this year, a lot of fatigue, a lot of professional development days. And we need, there's, you know, another action item on the agenda later to, for even more training. So I'm wondering if we're budgeting enough time into the calendar for professional development, for time off. And especially, you know, I said this last year, I think, like the AP classes, those exams are every May nationwide. So if we start a month after a school that starts in August, our kids get less time preparing for those exams. So with all the missed time, you know, over the last two years, I just wonder if we can start thinking about maybe lengthening the school year a little bit, of building in a little more time off for everything, PD and helping the kids and whatever they need, the intervention. Just to put that out there.
Is that a question? Okay.
I'm not sure. Well, I mean, I guess I want to.
It's a contractual, it's in the CBA.
Right.
So CBA does determine when teachers are to report for work and when they leave. Any other time is compensated additionally above and beyond their salary. So we do put in time for that and Director Ashley works on that as far as providing those additional hours and time. I will say the calendar before you today for the state PD days, we're actually not taking full days. We're just doing early releases because it's a balance between having children in school and receiving their instruction, as well as at the same time giving, affording the teachers additional professional development time that is not in their contract. So that is how Director Ashley, working with TAN and the teachers and the PD committee, squeeze in more time for that professional development. But it's something for future negotiations.
Really just a comment, thank you.
Mr. Leary?
Mr. Chairman, a couple, follow up with a couple of questions. So there's no more distance learning days?
In this calendar, Mr. Leary, I do not believe we did put in any DL days. I'm going to do a quick look. No, we did not, because we also heard from families, the importance, they wanted their children in school. We do have, I want to alert the committee and the public, we do have the option still during storms, inclement weather or emergencies. We do still have that option.
So if you use that option, what's the plan? Or maybe you can push that next December or whatever?
Yes, during the summer, we put together a plan and we submit it to RIDE. That would come before you so you could see the plan.
Because I work for a lot of young people. And I would respectfully disagree with my colleague in the table. And I've been fighting this for years. I'm glad to see the last couple of years that February vacation is back.
It is.
I know. And I push that every time, saying, this is the community. And I can tell you right now, it's a good thing, you've got to keep that, this community is tourist-oriented. And you can't be starting before, a week before, two weeks before in August because you're going to lose, these kids have tremendous opportunities right now. If you saw in the paper or email, they're looking, they took a full page ad in Newport this week, Newport Restaurant Group, which is 10, 11 restaurants. They're like 25 people short and now they're looking for high school kids. You think, so these kids have opportunity to make some decent money in the summer. And when summer stops two, three weeks earlier, the tourists disappear. So you can't be doing that, and I can't do that. And one last question, what does CBA determine, what's that mean? You said CBA?
Collective bargaining agreement, sorry.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the school year start, the rest of the school year?
Yes, and I just, well, you just, on that AP thing, I will let you know that some districts do just mornings, so students are still able to work. So they'll have morning sessions for their AP students and they're out by 12.
And how many PD days do we have? I'm sorry, seven or last day, one more?
In the, that's okay, in the contract, two.
Two days, okay. And how many is the state required?
I don't know, it used to be, excuse me?
There's four on this calendar.
Well, there's four because we're taking advantage of the state PD days. Or maybe I'm wrong. We've got orientation day, professional development day on the 2nd, on October 20th. We have an early release day. We're still going into school, but that is a PD day, yes. And then we have January 25th, March 13th and May 10th. Those are the state PD days, we're doing early release. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. I'm also, I agree with Ms. Leary, I'm happy to see February break in there. My kids love going to Vermont, as I know a lot of kids do. But I'm also happy to see the professional development days are not full days where the kids are out of school. Because being a parent, I can tell you, the kids, they're not into it. They don't get much done. I'm not just talking about my kids, I'm talking about their friends as well. So I'm glad to see them at least be in school for half the day. And I think like Ms. Winslow, I'm going to keep my eye on, you know, next year when we maybe have, you know, distance learning days at Rogers or for different events. I'm probably going to be against it, just giving you a heads up.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next item is 6.4, request for approval of ESAR funds for after-school scholarships for the Martin Luther King Junior Community Center. So a motion to approve the request as presented, Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright and Director Ashley.
Yes, good evening, thank you. So requesting before the committee, the use of ESAR funds to support the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Community Center specifically for servicing Pell students after school, not only with childcare but enrichment activities as well. They do a wide range of, you know, ranging from academics to music to arts, even some social emotional components. So I'll be presenting before the committee this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ashley on the requests? All right, not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next one, 6.5 is a request for approval of the high-quality ELA curriculum for grade 6 through 12. Next one, 6.5 is a request for approval of the high-quality ELA curriculum for grade six through 12 in a contract with McGraw-Hill for StudySync. Is there a motion, Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Ms. Boatright? Director Ashley?
Yes, thank you. I just want to begin by giving a, a ton of credit to the teachers who did this work. I mean, this was truly a monumental effort, a year's worth of curriculum review, research, Zoom meetings with different curriculum vendors, meetings after school, piloting, I mean, this, this was a lot of work, and they really came together, and by they, I mean both the middle and high school ELA teachers, and also special educators and ELL teachers to take this really seriously, because this, as you can see, is a serious commitment on behalf of the district. But also is, we believe, a big step towards really strengthening the coherence of our ELA curriculum across the grades and across the schools, and so yeah, happy to present before the committee this evening.
Thank you, are there any questions for Mr. Ashley on this?
Just want to make a comment.
Ms. Boatright?
I'm just want to say, I'm so happy that we have the money to do this now, because we never have, and I just want to say thank you to the federal, feds did making this happen.
Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
Excuse me, now, is this one being paid for with ESER money or with the literacy grant? Is that something else?
Yeah, no, it is through, technically through the comprehensive state literacy grant. But either way, we are just very, very excited. Yeah, especially the teachers.
I just wanted to say that this is what we should be spending money on, or, or grant money on, I mean, this is definitely what we need, and appreciate the hard work that everybody did.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Ms. Winslow?
Just was curious to know a couple of things, I mean, what stood out about this curriculum? And why, so why was it chosen over, over any others, you know, what were these features?
Yeah, thank you, so there are a few that really kind of stood out. So one was just the, the curriculum, the unit and lesson design. So how the standards are presented in the curriculum, in terms of the assessments that the, and the StudySync provides, and then the layout of the lessons. And another big priority for us was the support for our ELL students with 504s and students with IEPs. And also just achievement gaps that we know we have. And StudySync stood out in terms of the resources that they provide for both students and our teachers.
I'm curious, you know, so we're seeing, or we will see a request later, and go back to my professional development comment, but to, you know, add some more training for the teachers who are, who are working really hard to learn the into reading curriculum. So do you think we have enough professional development time budgeted into the calendar for the teachers to learn this new curriculum? And how long do you think, I heard a comment maybe last year that it takes about a year, obviously, to get used to a new curriculum, but what, what realistically do we think? Like, when will the kids see the benefits, and when will the teachers know it, do we have enough time?
Yeah, so it's always a tricky balance, right? And, you know, teachers would be the first to say it's, it's difficult for them too, because they want to be in front of our students, teaching, and they want the time to, to, you know, learn the curriculum and the format. And I think to answer your question about kind of when we're going to see the benefit, we believe pretty much immediately we'll start to see the benefit, you know, and we acknowledge from, and it will, you know, take a little bit of time in terms of, of learning that, but you know, the teachers are confident, and I want to give recognition to Ms. Dussell here, who is an English teacher at the middle school, who can speak to all the hard work that, you know, the middle school and her colleagues did, and, you know, the, the last point about the training is that we've been really upfront in talking as a team about, it's going to be ongoing. And, you know, based off of how the progress goes, off of the needs of, you know, our kids and teachers.
You, you're more than welcome, you just need to go to the podium. They have to hear, they won't hear you at home on the wall, sorry. It's the only way he gets on the, the video for home, sorry.
Sorry, Kate Dussell, grade eight ELA teacher. I've been doing StudySync about a month now, and we did the RICAS ELA test yesterday and today. And one of the students said to me today after the RICAS test, they said, you know, I think that the way that the StudySync questions and material is presented helped me feel more comfortable on the RICAS today. The questions were very similar in the, in the StudySync material. So I just wanted to share that, the kids felt more confident going into the test today, and I think that that is due to the StudySync, and I was not on Team StudySync, I liked my perspectives, but StudySync has really grown on me, and I really do appreciate the scaffolds that they have built right into the program for our L students and our other struggling readers, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
Okay, one last question. So now we have a high-quality curriculum in K, K, K through five, right? Now we're going to have one in six through 12. Do we have any others that are under review or plans to change? What are other curriculums?
We do math. Later this spring, I'm, I'm hoping to present before also for both the middle and the high school curriculum. It's a similar, they're months-long process.
And so that would, would that check all the boxes then, that our core curriculums are now high-quality curriculums? Math and ELA?
Yes, for math, that would, for math and ELA, K to 12. But then we know we have other content errors, obviously. Yes.
Okay, great news, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowlen?
Yeah, I, I noticed that there's consumables at each grade level, and they do, that, that number 30,000 at a particular grade level covers all six years, correct?
That's correct.
Right, they send it to you, okay, so next question is, are the, the books themselves, are they online then? So nothing really, there's not books that the kids get anymore, just the consumable?
Yeah, they do, yes, and we have the option to add in, or if there's a particular text that we want in a hard copy, for example, if a grade level, or we can add that in. But it will be online, and then there will be that consumable, so they will, the students will still have a physical workbook.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? All right, not seeing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven, zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is 6.6, a request for acceptance of the fiscal year 22 title for a student support and academic enrichment grant and award and contract to the Theodore R. Sizer Teachers Center at the Francis W. Parker Charter Essential School. So a motion to approve the request is presented, Dr. Flowers, seconded by Mr. Dring and Director Ashley.
Yes, thank you. So we're really excited about continuing the partnership with the Sizer Institute Rogers. I give credit to the entire, you know, the school, the whole team at Rogers High School, started this multiple years ago. And when this grant opportunity arose, we, we just felt like it was just a perfect opportunity for us to try to take advantage, and we're happy to have the Sizer teachers collaborate with the high school teachers and really work on making the summer credit recovery experience as engaging as possible, you know, for, for our students.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Ashley? Go right ahead, Ms. Winslow.
So this grant, this is very similar, I think, to what we approved last year, last year, so it's a continuation of essentially the same work to redesign summer school. Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Already not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is 6.7, request approval for acceptance of donation from the Pell Tech Trust and award of contractor Hooten, Hooten Mifley-
Niflin.
Miflin, Harcourt for instructional coaching support at the Claiborne Pell Elementary School. So a motion to approve. Ms., Ms. Winslow, seconded by Ms. Bowlen and Director Ashley.
Yes, thank you. So this is really a, a combination of kind of physical infrastructure support, which you see with the technology requests, which our teachers have cited about, but then also, as was mentioned earlier, about the coaching support for the new into reading. And, you know, as, as we've been talking about, anytime there's a new curriculum, there's that learning curve. And we're really excited about giving really that kind of coaching, an opportunity for someone who's an expert in this curriculum to come in, meet with the teachers in the grade level, do some observations, talk with them about just continuing to be more comfortable with the curriculum.
Ms. Winslow?
I was curious, the four full in-person days, is that going to be during the school year? And so we would have a sub in the classroom?
Yeah, it's, and I, I have to give, leaning over my shoulder, because the Pell admin team works wonders. So we, each day that the coach will come in, so yes, it's during the school day, and it's a combination of grade level meetings that are previously scheduled and observations in the classroom, and then specific meetings per sub availability.
So it's not like the teachers are in a conference room for six hours, and the sub is doing the whole lessons all day long?
That's right, correct, it's not like that.
Good, okay, thank you. I mean, it's, all goes back to my gripe, I guess, about, you know, are we budgeting enough time to learn these new tools? There's so many interventions and so many things, but the kids have lost so much time over the last two years, that I hate to see them home behind a screen or with a sub who doesn't know the new curriculum, or doesn't know the kids, or doesn't know the lessons. So anything we can do to maximize both, the kids in the classroom with the teacher who knows the stuff, and the teacher's getting better at it. That's what I want to see. Thank you.
Ms. Bowlen?
Yes, there's a program that goes along with that called Almyra, have you heard of that?
Yes.
Are we buying into that?
We, we are.
I've heard it's unbelievable.
Yes, it's, you know, new, so we're still learning it, but that's an adaptive, really personalized-
Personalized program.
Changes the levels based on where the student is currently at.
Right, it can be a quick add to each class, I'm glad to hear that.
Any other questions, comments? Not seeing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next motion, our next request is 6.8, request for renewal of Power School subscription. Director Andrade, request approval to renew the district's subscription to Power School. Power School is I, I, IEP, 504, an intervention electronic filing system. It contains preloaded documents that are aligned to state and federal regulations, and ensures the district is in compliance with our application of these required services. Support, the total subscription cost is $10,444.65, and it's funded through IDEA. Director Andrade will tell you what that is when she gets the chime. Is there a motion to approve, as requested, Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Ms. Boatright and Director Andrade?
Does anybody have any questions, I mean, what's-
You can explain IDEA.
Oh, IDEA is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, it's a federal.
Thank you. Any questions on the request? Comments?
Maybe you could tell us how Power School is a little bit different than Aspen, or like, is it, are there enhancements? Do we just start using this recently?
No, so we've used Power School for years, just for the special education documents and IEP plans, but the addition of the 504 and the MTSS documents and plans just allows us to house all of that information in one place, and as Mr. Gollum said, there, all of the documents are aligned to the state and federal regulations. So Aspen is our student information system. They speak directly to RIDE and give our numbers of students, and houses all our demographic data. Power School is just specifically for that add-on piece of the other documents.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
6.9 is a request for approval to purchase NACTEC automotive lift equipment. Director, Director Young and Assistant Director Anthony are here to request approval to purchase two lifts for the NACTEC Automotive Program. The equipment total is $22,495.27, and will be purchased using grant funds. The equipment is able to be relocated to a new building if required. So a motion to approve the request as directed, as presented, Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Bowlen. If you want to give us a little overview, if you don't mind, or a little review of what the request is, Ms. Winslow?
Yeah, so we had, every year, they get inspected, and this year, one of them didn't pass. So we have, we're, we're down one right now. Then we found some additional funding in the Perkins Grant to purchase two. So right now, if we were to move today into the new building, three of the five, pending this approval tonight, three of the five lifts would, would move with us over to the new building, so. And the, you know, the life expectancy here is, is 10 years, 10-year warranty and a 25-year structural warranty on these, so they'll, they'll last for a long time.
Thank you, any questions, comments, Mr. Leary?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I was not going to support this, even though it is a grant, because we don't know if it's, the high school's going to have the VoTEC in, of the automotive in there. But before the meeting, I spoke to Frank Dwyer about this videographer over here, owns two garages, and he said, you gotta, you gotta do this, even if it's only two years to get rid of it, so. I was a no, I will be a yes on this because of, but we still don't know whether the state's going to approve us to transfer the equipment, and hopefully it gets transferred, unlike what happened at Thompson. When Thompson was built, a lot of stuff, you know, all the shops has disappeared. And that's a fact.
Thank you.
So it can be transferred. It's coming with us, and it can be transferred.
What's that?
It's coming with us, and it can be transferred to the new building.
Right, right, and they had a lot of equipment, I know it's past, it was always 20 years ago. But a lot of equipment at Thompson, they bought machinery and all this stuff, and it was all supposed to get moved, or they're going to do it, and they're all gone. And there are people that worked, they would come in here and verify a minute for you, you know, but I'm not saying that's the case. I just, it just, it just worries me that it's not going to prove, but, you know, it is one of those, thanks as we need it, and we do for living.
Thank you, any other questions, comments? Not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor of the request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Next request is for-
Thank you, Frank.
You got one more. Next request is for approval to purchase a wheel balancer for NACTEC Automotive Program. The wheel balancer for NACTEC Automotive Program, this equipment is $19,157.23, and will be purchased using grant funds. Again, the equipment can be relocated, so a motion to approve. So, Ms. Dr. Flowers, seconded by Mr. Dring, I hope Frank approved this too. Any questions for Mr. Young? Or Director Anthony? Not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Eyes have it, seven, zero. Our next action item is 6.1, one, it's a request for approval to award the fiscal year 23, 23 E-Rate Basic Maintenance and Internal Connections. Is there a motion to approve, the request is presented, Ms. Bowlen, Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And I'm not sure who will give a little review of this item for us.
Good evening again, I'd be glad to do it.
A little bit closer, thank you.
So annually, we, we-
So, annually, we, we go through a process, we use E-Rate Online, we've contracted with them, and they are our guru of this E-Rate navigation system, there's two different components. We get internet service that's offset by federal, federal dollars, as well as our basic maintenance in internal connections. This year, at the request of Mr. Young, we've asked Ian Starker, he's our E-Rate consultant, to help us include new switches for the Pell addition, and we, we are on, it's a three-to-five year cycle for our E-Rate allowance, and we have roughly half a million dollars that we get to use, and we use, and they pay for it, about approximately eighty percent of our needed switches and basic maintenance. Basic maintenance is to just make sure everything's working, the current switches and hardware that we have in the building, and then there's a separate component of internet, internet connectivity, we've contracted for a longer period of time, and that is not up this year, it's only for switches and basic maintenance, internal connections. Yes?
Ms. Boatright?
I just have to ask, at Rogers, there's very poor internet connectivity, is there any way to apply any of this to help that in the future?
So, it's funny you say that, because we are actually installing switches, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Young, that's still underway, so we had some, we had some federal assistance, and they are being rolled out into the building, and a lot of the equipment is also able to carry forward into the new build. You can disconnect, we have to buy new wires, but we can still use the, the devices.
Great, thank you very much, good to hear.
I only have one question, it just goes back, E-Rate, a couple of years ago, when we were discussing E-Rate, it kind of got talked like it was going away, or being, did it, something that got re-upped, or was it something else I'm thinking of that was faded?
So, give us five-year cycles, so perhaps at that point, we were on a cycle, we also renegotiated our E-Rate consultant contract. We use this E-Rate Online, we do almost everything virtually, and he's, he's been a great partner for us, saved us a ton of money, and-
Perfect, thank you.
Eligibility of certain devices may have, may have went away.
Maybe that sort of was it.
I'm sorry.
You know, it's great to see it, because it's a big help to us for technology. Ms. Bowlen?
So, I don't think you quite answered Louise's question, is it going to improve? The likelihood that it will, okay.
Very, very likely.
I'm going to hold you guys. And when? Tomorrow, next week?
I'm going over there on the way home to check.
Yes.
Any other questions, any other questions, comments? Not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, seven zero, thank you. Next action item, 6.12, is request for approval of change order PCO 13R1 for Pell Elementary School, it's a credit for the building management system allowance. Is there a motion to accept the refund as presented? Ms. Boatright, seconded by Dr. Flowers. I believe we have Kyle, if we have any questions on it? This is a refund, a credit back of the allowance. Any questions from Mr. Lutini? Not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Eyes have it, seven zero. Next item, 6.13, is a request for approval of change order PCO 22.4.2, Pell Elementary School, hybrid waterless urinal test fixture. Is there a motion to approve the purchase of the test fixture as presented? Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Dr. Flowers. We can have Kyle give us a little overview of the purpose of this, if, or one of the building committee, whoever-
I'll let him talk first, and then I'll add something.
Do we have him?
Yep.
Well, it's not a very live-looking picture, so I'm not sure.
Well, it keeps going, he just had it unmuted, and then he muted again, so, but it was unmuted a minute ago.
Kyle, are you there?
I am here, I didn't hear the question, though.
Just, we're on the test, the urinal test fixture, if you could give us a overview of the purpose of this, and the hope of-
Okay, yeah. So, this is for a single hybrid waterless urinal in the new boys' bathroom in the addition, and the purpose is to test out the fixture with the, the goal of using it in Rogers, if it's accepted by everyone, the students who use it, maintenance of the urinal itself. So, it's a hybrid waterless urinal, because technically, it's still hooked into the plumbing, I think it's every forty-eight or seventy-two hours, it flushes a gallon of water through the urinal, which would need to be done by a custodial staff if this was not hooked up to water, and it was a true waterless urinal. So this takes care of that maintenance aspect of it, kind of in an automatic fashion, but you're still saving quite a bit of water usage by only using one gallon every, you know, two or three days.
Perfect, thank you. Any, Ms. Bowlen, go right ahead.
Yeah, what I would like to add is that, so, we have been working diligently on saving water in the new building, because we know how expensive it is in Newport, and so therefore we are exploring all kinds of different options, and we're hoping to put a test bathroom into the visitor center here at the welcoming center, so that we can, you know, see how those fixtures work, so we've done a lot of research, and we're also exploring the idea of going with paper, paper towels, not using them, and using hand dryer, so there'll be more to come on that, but we're hoping that we're able to include all that as, you know, high-tech in the new building, so we're trying it out here.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Not seeing or hearing any, all those in favor of approving the hybrid waterless urinal test fixture, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven zero. Next one, 6.1, for request for approval of change order PCO 24, Pell Elementary School, snow removal due to storm events. Is there a motion to approve as presented, Ms. Boat, Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Bowlen? Are there any questions for Mr. Lutini on this? It's rather straightforward, it was costs that were incurred for snow removal. Mr. Dring?
I know you say, Mr. Chair, it's straightforward, this is $4,000 to remove snow. I live on Dudley Avenue, next time there's a storm, if you want to call me, I'll come over with my kids, and for $4,000, I'll shovel it myself. Oh, is it $5,000? How, how did we, why is this not incorporated into Being Brothers when they, as they're going along building, I mean, I would think if, if it snows, they just clean it up, and suddenly, did anybody approve this?
Kyle can answer that, and I think you should, and he will.
Well, Kyle answered. Did anybody on our end give them the okay to, to go remove the snow, and they'll pay in five grand?
Kyle can explain.
So, I didn't make out all of the question, but I'll, I'll just explain what the charges are for, so this is for multiple snow events, it's not from one event, and it was tracked on time and material, so these are the actual hours the guys worked to clear the snow, there is no material involved, but it's just a term that we use, and we'll hear it again as we move through Rogers. So just to get familiar, time and material is tracked, it's not a proposal-based change order, it's tracked as they do the work, so the major cost here comes from the roofer, because they had to clear the roof before it was finished being installed, they had their vapor barrier down, but they didn't have the insulation and the membrane, so when they cleared the snow in order to continue working, it's a very slow process on the roof, because they can't damage what they've already installed, you have to take your time with it, and unfortunately, they still get paid the same rate as a roofer, whether they're shoveling snow, or laying insulation, whatever they're doing, that's what, that's what rate we owe them on their contract.
Ms. Winslow?
I know, shaking my head too. Rogers is going to be a two-year construction project, so what's the snow budget? I mean, we could get nailed.
Twenty thousand comedians out of work.
Quite honestly, you can't predict, if we could predict, and we had a crystal ball, we could tell you that it would never rain on the school either, but-
We're cutting so much, so is, is there any kind of alternative that we can think of for Rogers?
I'll explain, just, it, it's going to be a contingency asked for, but it'll be just that, it'll be a contingency, so if you exhaust the twenty or thirty thousand dollars you put aside to build Rogers, because there's four blizzards in the cost, it, they'll be coming back, you can only plan so much, because nobody can forecast the weather and predictability of snow, so unfortunately, you can ask for a contingency, but it'll be just a contingency that could be overspent and asked for more because of weather-related, so unfortunately, it's, you know, there was hope, we might make it with no snow removal, but they needed to, to continue on the progress that they made, so. Any other questions? Dr. Flowers?
We don't have, no, I mean, there's no alternative, it's a union job, we have to kind of go with the, the labor that's working on site.
So, yeah, unfortunately, we have to use their labor, it's on their contract, and they are paid at prevailing wage, which is a state law, so, yes, you have to, Dr. Flowers?
Yeah, I just scrolled down on that attachment, and it showed pictures that they took, you know, on the inside, how the snow worked its way in, and this wasn't just shoveling the sidewalk, which I guess that's taken care of otherwise, but it's unfortunate that we had to have so much at that particular time, but these fellows know the layout of what they've been putting together, so, it's that line, it is what it is, I guess, but I think it's just a, they do have the photographic evidence here.
I can say that there's been nobody who's voted on this to get to this point, that has not, has been comfortable with it, so, it's been a common question, that's why I'm so familiar with the answers, nobody has been comfortable, but unfortunately, it's part of the building process, so. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Lutini? Not hearing or seeing any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries, five two. Last action item is 6.5, it's a request for approval of employee leave, that'll be, that'll be addressed in a executive session after the meeting. So, at this point, we're going to take, just do a five-minute recess, stretch our legs a little, and come back for, to start discussion items, so five-minute recess. Yeah? The young old talk didn't help. Everybody was talking about, yeah, so we had to go to bed.
Well, I mean, you read the mechanism.
Well, that's where everybody's going, everything's water, any restaurant or bar you can do, but they do need water, they, they don't work if you don't have intuitive water, that's how, so, so.
Call the meeting to order?
Oh, boy.
Okay, so, we left off at item seven, which is discussion items. First discussion item is 7.1, school building committee update, and I believe Kyle will lead that, is that correct?
Yes.
Kyle, are you still there? Do you have your bathroom break in your back?
All right.
Still on his bathroom break, maybe?
I can-
I think he's there.
Is he there?
He's there, he just took himself off.
I, I just heard the mute come on, I saw it on check.
Yeah, am I on right here?
You're up, school board committee, building update.
Sorry about that, so, we'll start with Pell update, we have completed, we brick, all the staging is down, bricks been washed, so that's a huge milestone, and the building looks great. The storefront, which is your windows, that installation is still ongoing, but it's nearing completion, as of last week, it was approximately eighty-five percent, with the frames and the glass being installed. Our interior, the in-wall roofing, there's mechanical electrical plumbing, eye protection have all been completed, they've all passed inspections through the process as well, so the, it's, the drywall is now going up, starting on the second floor, and we'll be working down through the first floor. Also, starting probably next week, you'll start seeing some activity on the site with site work across the street, between the two parking lots, as well as on the addition side, where you'll start to see the rustle infrastructure going in. That pretty much sums up where we're at right now with Pell. On to Rogers, we're still in the design development phase, I'm not sure if I had relayed to this committee, but we did officially pass, get approval on the schematic design from RIDE, probably about three, four weeks ago at this point, so just an update on that, that was good news, so now we're, we're in the design development stage, we have been reviewing exterior materials, there was actually a tour yesterday at Brown Middle School, which was a previous SLAM project, to review some of the finishes that were there that would be proposed on this job as well as an option, so nothing's finalized at this point, as far as the exterior of the building, but options are currently being reviewed. That, that pretty much sums it up, I mean, they continue every day- I mean, they continue every day with refining the design, interior of the building, each space. Thank you, Lisa. I don't know if you have anything to add?
I think just that it went out for pricing again as of Friday or maybe Sunday.
Yes, yes, the estimate. Sorry, the design development estimate has started. The documents came out, I believe it was Monday. They said they'd have it Friday, but they came out over the weekend. So we got them out on Monday. About three weeks, we had the estimate back on that.
Anything else to add? Any questions on the update? Yeah, welcome to use the microphone to remind them of what they.
What they forgot.
We're looking at the DD documents.
Monday.
Monday morning, bright and early, eight o'clock.
Thank you. And all righty, I think that wraps up. Thank you, Kyle. Have a good night. Thanks. Our next discussion item, 7.2, is an ESER update. And I think Director Ashley and Director Gonzalez are stepping up to give us an update on those two items or one item, two folks.
Yes, thank you. So in regards to ESER, you've been hearing this evening about MTSS and broadly supports for our students. And really, that gets, I mention that because it really gets at the heart of our focus with using ESER funding and recognizing that, you know, our students are facing many challenges from the pandemic. And we know we have some learning loss to recover from. And that MTSS, that multi-tiered systems of support is, that name is apropos because it really is about giving all the different layers of support that we know our students need. And that's academic, social and emotional. And so in ESER two, you'll see line items connected to our math and our reading interventionists. That's what Ms. Canini was speaking to earlier this evening. You'll see the MTSS coordinator positions, you know, again, Ms. Canini, that's her role. And broadly, our community partners. We just, we, it takes a village, right? And we're so fortunate in Newport to have the partners that we have to really work together because we really do view it as really one in the whole system. That while we have them here during school hours, we know we need to care for our children after school and outside of the school buildings as well. And so, you know, we're happy to to answer specific questions. I want to, I just want to add, you'll see, I was presenting earlier about curriculum two. You'll see line items connected to the math and the ELA curriculum.
Thank you. Any questions on the, Ms. Ms. Bowden, I think you had to hand up first.
I'm just looking at the chart that you sent for ESER two, and it says, continue on the far right-hand side. And it looks like a lot of the tutoring, that at least TMS tutoring is not going to continue in Rogers. And I'm just curious why.
Yeah, that was not yet completed, actually. So we did not update that particular item. And so I just want to be clear that it's possible that we're still gathering input, but actually from TMS is looking promising in terms of the tutoring that we have. So we do apologize for that.
And same with Rogers. So you're assessing it, you haven't determined yet is what your answer is then? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bowden?
I would just say, you know, math probably being our weakest link and the best time to catch kids is at the beginning. So if there were money that we could, you know, put into getting another interventionist, if we found it was successful this year, I would truly support an interventionist in math at the elementary school.
Ms. Winslow?
I just, I really want to thank both of you guys for putting together this report and it's super helpful to see it all laid out. I know Mr. Leary is always looking for it. What have we spent on the ESER? It's all right here in front of us now, you know? Is this something you'll update regularly for us? And, you know, and then I guess the only question I have is, just out of curiosity, looks like the Highlander Institute, we're not going to continue that? Any, anything to share about why?
Yeah, no, I'm glad you raised it. So and it's, we want to actually give credit to the work from Highlander Institute. We found it really valuable.
Yeah, you heard that, so.
Yeah, and actually, that feedback came from the Pell team. They just said, you know, we feel like it's been wonderful. It served the purpose. And now we feel like we need to, like, we utilize the supports around, like, they were helping us with the MTSS process and everything you've heard tonight. And now we want to begin to shift focus to more of a math particular focus. And so we're looking at potentially a different support there for the Pell team in math in particular.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, just Dr. Jermaine made a note that they really did feel like they valued and learned from the training and grew as a team from that as a result.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Seen any, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next is 7.3, Superintendent Jermaine will give a LEAPs initiative update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have a presentation in front of you, very basic, and just the highlights, high level on LEAPs presentation. LEAPs, as you've learned, Newport was eligible for the funding that is a state initiative. The acronym LEAP stands for Learning Equity and Accelerated Pathways. And we are during this process to assess the conditions we are at in Newport based on the learning loss. We identify research-based interventions we can put into place and leverage strategies to help implement improvements in the teaching and learning and also student achievement. And we want to establish a strategic focus for learning recovery in our district as well as something that's sustainable and will be embedded in our practices for the future. The team is, consists of myself, me, Dr. Mooney, Director Andrew, Director Young, Director Ashley and Director Gonzalez. We are the only district that included our finance director. And we felt that was important in order to make sure we create sustainable plans for now and the future. And also to make sure our finance director is keenly aware of the initiatives we'd like to invest in going forward. We're partnering up with West Ed, Proving Ground, that's a center, that's a policy group out of Harvard University and the Rhode Island Department of Ed. And as I mentioned before, Newport schools were invited into this and it was for a variety of reasons along with other districts. And it was based on the academic achievement in ELA and math, students being able to, that their well-being overall, that included their attendance, chronic absenteeism, the school culture and student engagement. That was areas of need for our district. And then also looking at the district enrollment of throughout the years. And also the changes our demographics have gone through recently, as been noted earlier this evening. So the purpose of our work, as I mentioned before, is to build a sustainable, durable, strategic approach to improvements in the district. And as you can see, as Ms. Nash moved forward, the four main categories we're focusing on, and this is what RIDE focused on in order to invite us into this group and the COVID-19 impact, the academic performance, school culture and climate, et cetera, as I mentioned before. The methods and the meetings, what we discussed are the, and the priority areas that we are going over involve equity. That means everyone has access to the improvements, to the work we're doing, the expanded learning opportunities before, after school and even during non-school hours in the summer months. Instruction, looking at the quality of instruction. Are we using green curriculum, meaning high-quality curriculum, which you've heard tonight, is what we have been investing in with the ESER funds. Looking at the whole child, student well-being, providing comprehensive supports in that area and making sure we're looking at the whole child. If a child doesn't feel healthy, safe or comfortable, they're not going to, no matter what, and they're, they're not going to be able to succeed and to learn. So that's very important. Student engagement, how well do we know our students? That relationship between teacher and student, between principal, student, administration and families, that's very, very important. Talent, in when we do our recruiting, how we're doing our recruiting. Even last year, we started a different type of process as far as how and who we recruit and where we recruit in order to gain talent for our district. And then school improvement overall. Are we focusing on the areas based on data where we need to focus? So our group in the preliminary rounds, and we're just at the very beginnings of this work, we've identified in the equity area, the multilingual and students with disabilities is an area we need to look at as far as improvements, as far as equity. And expanded learning, we do feel that our students need as many opportunities as possible. And you've heard about some of them as far as tutoring, after-school programs, before-school programs, during-school programs in order to address the children more deeply, I'll say. So we've completed a data dive and we have some summary, summary findings that we'll actually, this Thursday, we'll be reviewing with the Harvard group, the team is meeting with them. We just sent in some documentation Monday morning. And thank you to Director Ashley. He's the keeper of sending the information for us once the team has completed its work. So we'll be looking at the student achievement results, our attendance survey works, results and state census data are just some of the resources and sources we're looking at for this data. So preliminary findings, the majority of our MLL students enter school at early levels of English language development. That means we really need to invest in our L population. Student absenteeism is still a challenge at our buildings and we'll continue to work on that like other districts. It is becoming and it continues to be a state and national problem. And 91% of our students, PK through 12, were not needing the proficiency in state math assessments. And that's something we're very focused on. So that's why that curriculum work we're doing now, the professional development, the interventionists we have and the suggestions for them, that's why we're doubling down in those areas. So we have finalized a SMART goal. And the SMART goal means it has to be specific, measurable, achievable. And we can get it in the time allotted to us and the results in the time allotted to us. We're focusing on the middle school, grades five through eight, the more we looked at the data. So we're looking at those, those grade levels. And now we're looking into root cause analysis. We're going into a deeper reason, trying to find out the whys behind our grade five through eight students need to improve and are, to increase their math proficiency. So that was very quick. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Bowden?
It's a quick question. When have we started spending the 1.7 million?
We, what we're doing is all our efforts and work, and this is to Director Gonzalez and the importance of his involvement, is the initiatives and where we're putting these investments, we will get matched dollar for dollar. So that's how we're doing it.
Ms. Winslow?
Is there a time limit on these funds like ESER?
Yes, yes, I believe it's, I'm getting building projects and I think it's October of 24? Oh, 25, good, 9:30, 25, thank you. And 12, 125 is a building project. It's a big year.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll keep you posted.
Great program. Eight is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Bowden. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Not seeing or hearing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Number nine is the monthly correspondence. Is there a motion to accept the month, the correspondence as presented? Doc, Mrs. Bowden, seconded by Dr. Flowers. Any questions or comments on the correspondence? Not seeing or hearing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Reports of superintendent and staff. Is there a motion to accept the reports from superintendent and staff as presented? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Bowden. And Mr. Gonzalez is up as usual for 10.1 expenditure revenue reports and the Newport Public Schools restricted grant report, 10.2. I'm not sure if there's anything you want to add or just accept questions, your reports in the backup. So, Mr. Leary?
Yes, thank you. We all got, last month I asked for the Aspen, I think it's all in your backup, you saw it. So I guess the question to the committee and Mrs. Jermaine, there is some, there is some things on.
Can we just do the finance first?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry, not to, just I wanted to keep it to the, we'll go to the enrollment next. But anything on the finance or grant reports for Mr. Gonzalez? Great.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any, thank you. So now to Mr. Leary. 10.3 is enrollment demographics and homeless reports. So, Mr. Leary?
All right, thank you. So in the report from Aspen reports, it mentions that there is trouble sometime with, as Mrs. Jermaine often says, the, we know, I showed the attendance is absolutely timely and early. But the last, last bullet, it says, yes, the daily attendance totals report and a system report can be generated for any, I'm sorry, additional, no additional costs for daily, weekly, monthly or annual attendance reports. Yes, daily attendance totals is a system report and can be generated at any range. There's no additional cost. So not seeing much of that this year. Why can't we start getting that like we did in past?
Well, you want, the, the reports we get, they're not attendance reports. I just want to be clear. They're the things that the first bullet says. It gives the number of incidents. I believe, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, I believe what you would like to see is every day what the attendance is at each school.
Which we see for many, many years until a year ago in October.
The name of the report, you are correct, is called from Aspen Attendance Report. But it's not reporting to you how many students are present in school each day. It's giving you a list of incidents that occur each day as the first bullet in answer states. You can receive that, but that's not giving you how many children were present in each school each day.
I'll have to go back and look at those reports, but we had them for years. And I, I think it was.
Correct.
Figure out the number of kids. I just don't understand why we're not getting that anymore.
Because they were not reporting, I don't know how to explain it, any, and I am trying to. So I would think if we have 100 children that go to Pell, you're going to want to know how many went to school that day.
Correct.
And you would hope to get a report that showed you 90 children were in school that day at Pell.
Correct.
Or hopefully 100, all of them. All right, that report that you were receiving does not give you that information. It tells you incidence of attendance, right? So 100 kids were there, but 50 of them left. And so you're going to see 50 dismissed. You're going to see it all on one, but you're not going to see how many actually were there the entire day. You're not going to see that 50 number.
You're also, maybe retarded. It did it by the week, it did it by the month, it did it by the year.
Correct, but it. Correct, but as reported before, it can be, one child can be present, attends, then they get dismissed, then they return, then they can get suspended, then they can be dismissed again. So that's six incidents for one child. And that's what that report shows you, as the first bullet explained, the woman from Bowden explained.
You had some presenters tonight, one people mentioned about Rogers, how bad the attendance is, they work on, I think it was Mrs. Kanini, you know, which is medicine attendance. So we don't see anything, at least I don't see anything, not really. So I think we should bear as reported, directors, or PTO, whatever you want to call us, we need to, we need to see something like that, and then adjust it.
Yep, I can, and I can give you.
There's no cost for it, no, we already have it.
So I can give you, and you are correct, Mr. Leary, we do have a daily attendance document that we all fill in every day that does show how many we have in attendance at school. The committee does not have access to that at this point, and I'm more than happy to give you access to it so you can see it. I'm going into it now.
That sounds good. Would we also do weekly, monthly, and yearly?
Well, let me get it up for a moment before I say anything else.
We don't have to do it now.
No, but I can, it shows you, I'm trying to get to where we are in April.
While you're looking, I just, like, for example, I know.
So here it is, April 12th today, we had 672 present, 83 absent, I believe this is Rogers, and it was 88%. Pell had 748 present, 40 absent, it was 94.6%. We can give you access to this, this is something internally we're using. So we do know the attendance every day.
Is that what you send to the state?
No, this does not go to the state. What the state does is they take, and I would need Doreen Schlaackman sitting next to me to explain this to you, the state takes what Aspen uploads, and they take, and they can filter out the attendance, and that's how they do it, using the student's SASED number.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm happy to give, I'll work with the team, give you access to this.
Right down the line, Ms. Boatright to Ms. Winslow.
So I just want to follow up on that in a different way, but we have chronic absenteeism. I believe in the past we were overcounting our absences by incidences. So that's why we pulled back those reports. Do we have, can you give us a general, some general numbers, not specifics, but like last year we were at, or prior to fixing this problem, we were at certain numbers, and we've jumped up, but we still have issues. I know that from the last, whatever meeting we were at that had people at, were telling us about this. But, could you just give us an idea of how the schools are doing for absenteeism, please?
Yes, thank you. I will get that.
I wanted to try to help.
I know they're improving, right, but I, so for next month.
Actual data, I have to get that.
Like pre-COVID, COVID, and then now, and maybe it will help us understand what was misrepresented prior as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go right ahead, Ms. Boatright.
I wanted to try to help facilitate the conversation between Mr. Leary and Ms. Jermaine. I mean, I think it's misleading to call what we used to receive a report, because it really was just raw data, with numbers and squares. And those numbers can be interpreted to build reports if you know how to interpret them. So the danger of looking at those numbers was that if you don't know the context or don't know how to interpret that raw data, you were going to make incorrect judgments, and that was what was happening. So that's why they were pulled back. When the, in this message from the Aspen rep, she's saying that, yes, you can generate that data for any timeframe. And that's the data that is sent to the state, if I'm not mistaken, and that is how the state knows, because they know how to interpret the data, it's all done through systems, backend, you know? And that's what calculates our attendance rate. I think it would be very helpful, because, you know, we do need to know if we're improving or not, is to actually have a report that is designed that shows us attendance rate trends, you know? Is it going up, is it going down? What are, you can see spikes, was there a weather event, was there COVID, was there something going on at the school? To show us, you know, what, what things are improving, the report should show us where we are improving. And right now, we don't have that at all, even just the numbers that Dr. Jermaine has. It's really, I think it's just a daily total, right? So it's still pretty basic, but maybe the district wants to look at creating a report that does track attendance over time and how we are improving, or seeing improvements based on our interventions.
Well, the ultimate goal is exactly what you're speaking to, Ms. Winslow. So for instance, if we start on April 1st, I'm just going to go Rogers, 87, 85, 86, 86, 89, 86, 88, 88. They're getting above 85%, and they know that because they have specific people focused on that data. But see, their goal, and Mr. Vance's, Principal Vance's goal, is to get this up to 90. And over at Thompson, for the same period, they're at, and I'm rounding up, if it's 91.5, I call it 92, but it's 92, 92, 90, 92, 94, 90, and 92%. So Thompson's doing a little better, and then Pell is actually tracking well because it's very similar to Thompson, 92, 92, 92, 92, 94, 92, 92, and 95. So those are the things, that's why we made it very simple in that way, but we can, I'll get this so you can see this.
Yeah, I mean, I think all we, all I would suggest is that if we're going to design a report, that it shows you that you can see evidence that your interventions are working.
Yep, I agree.
And so if a daily attendance total is really all you need to do that, you know, that's up to the school leadership, but for our purposes, we just want to know that they're on track or not, right? I don't know.
Actually, Mr. Jermaine?
Mr. Leary, go right ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Steph. That's what I was trying to get to. And my point is, in a way, look, we just approved the calendar, and we have Wednesday off before Thanksgiving. So I would assume that you had, we have less than 2,000 kids in the system, and it was last two or three years, Wednesday had 700 kids absent. You're saying, why we have school Wednesday, nobody showed up? Let's just, let's give them Wednesday off before Thanksgiving, make Wednesday Thursday. That's the trends I'm looking for in this, as well as what Stephanie said, the report intervention, and thank you for saying that.
Yes, yes, and we tried to align the other districts, we all looked, all the districts, we looked at our attendance on that Wednesday. So Portsmouth, Milltown, and Newport will be off that day.
Well, that's a ten, I'm sure, high absentee.
Excellent, any other questions? Any questions on the superintendent's update on partnerships, collaboratives, and personnel? Okay? Therefore, that concludes the discussion on reports. Is there a motion to accept, the motion's been made, all those in favor to accept the reports as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Next action is quarterly reports, is there a motion to accept the quarterly reports as presented? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Mr. Drang. Any questions for Director Young on the facility update? Comments, questions on the facility update? Mr. Young, anything you'd like to add to the, since you've hung around for this?
Yeah, might as well, I was first one here, last one out. No, just, we're happy that we've survived the winter, right, with heat in all the buildings, especially Rogers. And I think that's a lot with preventive maintenance that we performed early on in the springtime, so that's definitely a plus. And we'll continue that with going forward, and I think, you know, I'm looking at this form here, we'll be able to match this up next year, we'll be able to look back and see if the numbers grow or, you know, where they differentiate, but now, now we're just getting ready for spring, you know, we got grass mowing and some other maintenance stuff coming up, but nothing else to add in here.
Ms. Boatright, is that a question, or?
Yes.
Get a cramp. Oh.
No cramp. I thank you once again for having this report, I really, really appreciate it. And I have, I'm a little remiss, because I haven't really gone through in detail, I have to say that, but I just wanted to ask, what's the status of the old now furnace at Thompson? What is our plan with that? Because we've replaced mine in 2019, and then you have the other one, which we were going to maybe put on a priority thing with RIDE, is that happening or not yet?
Yeah, so that, we're going through, we'll get, you know, get bids, I'm working with George on the current, and he'll put in the new ones, so we're going through that, yeah.
Going through that, and once you get bids, then we'll.
We'll go through it. We'll go through, and we'll get the reimbursement from Roger.
Thank you.
That's, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All righty, thank you, Director Young, for hanging around. Any questions on the college and career readiness report? Ms. Winslow?
I was actually wondering if you know what percentage of the NAC Tech students compete in Skills USA and also have internships? That was the, kind of like the two big things we saw in the report and tonight. Overall, like how many, how many of the NAC Tech students do those two things?
So percentage-wise, I, it's not a great percentage. You know, there are some students in each program that represented every program, there's 65 competitions, that's a long night, but it was, so, but we, I can tell you, we, any IT competition, it was Newport was, you know, represented, and you can see some of the trends in some of the schools, some are heavy on certain vocational programs, some are heavy on some others, but Newport was really big, strong with the IT piece, which is, which is awesome. Internships, Ms. Clark is working those, so right now we're planning for the internships in the spring. We have to do that now because then we have to set up their Rogers High School schedule based on when they'll be out of the building with that, so I don't have that number. I know we have Ron in Carpentry who's going very well, he's going to, he's already been, you know, offered a position. I've got a super automotive student who is interning, has a couple of academic classes, he's got to make sure we're working on her, else he'd be interning more, which is good. He's talking to the younger students and saying, hey, guys, you know, I would be at the auto dealer all day, but I have to come back here to take, you know, a certain class and things like that. So he's, he's, he's got offered a position as well, and the general manager was here a couple of weeks ago, actually in our presentation with Slim, and he's like, I got five more, you know, can you get me five more today? So that's how well he's doing, so. The numbers, just the thing about the internships is the students, they genuinely enjoy being inside the program, like in the building, so they don't, you know, they're busy, they're doing the same work, they just, they don't want to leave. So some of them are there at 7, some of them are there at lunchtime, some of them are at 2 o'clock, you know, so they enjoy being inside the piece, and they still get the work-based learning experience, although it's in the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on college and career readiness report? Okay? Perfect, not seeing any, all those in favor of accepting quarterly reports as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That leads us to suggested meeting dates and agenda items. The, we have a couple of things on there, the next school committee meeting is May 10th, there's a Newport School Committee Special Meeting Monday, April 18th, that's a 5:30 PM virtual meeting, there's a joint workshop with City Council Thursday, April 28th, 5:30 at the City Council Chambers, and the Policy Subcommittee, looks like they have a meeting tomorrow at 5:30 here at Pell Elementary. That's it on the suggested meeting dates. We would now need to go into executive session to discuss a couple of items, so if Mr. Drang could make the motion and read the sentence for us?
Sure. State may seek to convene, if warranted, executive session under jurisdiction of Relentless Law, Chapter 46, 42-46-5A. One, any discussions of the job performance, character, or physical or mental health of a person or persons provided that such person or persons affected shall have been notified in advance, in writing, and advised that they may require that the discussion be held at an open meeting.
The motion by Ms. Drang is our second, Ms. Bowden, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero, will adjourn to executive session and report out at the conclusion of executive session in open session. Meetings adjourn to executive session. No.
And if you want to wait, I'll take you home.